We'll open the meeting with a moment of silence. And while we are silent, if you could keep in mind the families of two people who passed away this past week. One is a young man, 30 years old, Drew Paglia. He was from Whitman. And I worked with his mother for a number of years at Massasoia. She's a great woman. And his funeral was last Friday. And then another woman by the name of Barbara Finkelstein died and was buried on Sunday. Barbara Finkelstein is not from Whitman. She's from Franklin, but she worked for over 30 years as a teacher and administrator at Massasoia Community College, which has served our community well. She served our community well. Then she became president at York County Community College in Maine. Retired, it got sick. It's very, very sad. But the connection that she has with Whitman is that a few years ago, she took over the chairpersonship of the classmates today, neighbors tomorrow scholarship program that's run by the Jewish war veterans. Every year, each school in the, or most of the schools in the Commonwealth, usually 90 or 100, nominate a student to be a recipient of that award. And they have a breakfast in February. And all of the students who have been nominated for the award from each of the schools, Whitman nominated someone, they come to a breakfast and they receive a certificate. Six of those people received scholarships, $1,000 scholarships. And a woman by the name of Dorothy Benner, who some of you will recognize that name, she was the chairpersonship of the scholarship committee for a number of years, over 40 years. Barbara was that chairperson for the last four years, I think. And so she has a connection to Whitman through Dorothy Benner. And I know I spoke too long, but I hope you remember her family, the family of Barbara and Jimmy Finkelstein and the family of Bonnie Paglia and Drew. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of bill and payroll warrants, we just did that. Accept correspondence in the read file. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It has reached 7:05. So it's time for a public meeting with respect to the application of Whitman Auto Sales Corporation for a Class II Auto Dealer's License on a premises located at 864 to 878 Temple Street, subject to the receipt of the license fee and final inspection approval and approval of the building commissioner. Is there a motion to accept the application?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Lincoln, would you like to introduce the matter? And I know the gentleman is here.
Is the gentleman here? Pull up. Would you like to come up?
Yeah, my name is Jack De Novas and Giovanni.
Giovanni Cardozo.
Yeah, we just tried to reopen the car dealer with the Martins. I just don't know what's left for you to do.
We have all your paperwork and your plans. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh huh. Good luck.
Think this is going to be very swift.
(laughing).
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Best of luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation by State Representative Allison Sullivan to Claire Lamatina. Representative Sullivan.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for having us this evening. I do have my colleague Senator Brady here with me as well. Claire, if you'd like to come up here real quick for me. I didn't know you were going to get such an audience today. So many of you probably know Claire Lamatina because she is the daughter of Randy Lamatina, our selectman here in Whitman. But Claire is also a very determined young lady, I would say, and very generous. During the pandemic, Claire decided to do the Whitman Strong Fund, which many of you probably have seen throughout the town or even participated in yourselves. Claire decided to do these Whitman Strong fundraiser campaign with signs to make sure that everyone here in Whitman knew that they were banding together. And as a community, as a town, she was raising money for the food pantry. Because Claire thought about how many people are probably suffering during the pandemic, and which they did. And a lot of people sought resources from the food pantry, probably never before during the pandemic. And with speaking with Claire's mom, she raised $17,000 for the food pantry, which if none of you know, $17,000 goes a long way for a food pantry here in Whitman and the surrounding communities. But if you also don't pay attention to the news and to other surrounding communities, Claire's initiative actually took wind and spread like wildfire throughout the Plymouth County area. Abington, East Bridgewater, I know Plymouth did it. So Claire's initiative really paved the way for other communities to follow suit. So I would say you probably raised a lot more than $17,000 for food pantries across the Commonwealth here in Massachusetts. So I would like to present you a citation here this evening. And if it's okay, I'd like to read it. "Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Claire Lamatina in recognition of the success of the Whitman Strong Campaign in raising thousands of dollars for the Whitman Food Pantry in your leadership and drive to help others in your community throughout the Whitman Strong Campaign, which inspired others to do the same in surrounding communities during the COVID-19 pandemic. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 20th day of July 2021 at the State House of Boston, signed by our Speaker, Ronald Mariano, and offered by your State Representative Allison Sullivan." Congratulations and thank you.[462.12][462.12](applause). And if I may, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Senator Michael Brady as well.
Thank you, Representative. You couldn't have done better words in honor of Claire. And I think we should get you on other fundraisers. We could use a few fundraisers ourselves.[486.12][486.12](laughing). But Claire and to your family, congratulations as well. And this is a citation from the State Senate. "In recognition of your insight and selfless commitment to the community by designing a method to help feed the hungry by fundraising for the Whitman Food Pantry," and a lot of people have suffered through this pandemic. So there's a lot of great effort on your part and God bless you. And this is signed by the Senate President, Karen Spelker, the Clerk, Michael Harley, and myself, Michael Brady. Congratulations.[514.12][514.12](applause).
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, I know, oh, sorry, were we clapping again? Sorry.[537.62][537.62](laughing). I know we have a couple of officers and firefighters being recognized this evening. And unfortunately, we weren't made aware of it in time to have citations ready. So we would like to present something in the future to both the officers and the firefighter for the tremendous work that they did in saving lives and plenty of them. So, you know, I think what you guys do on a day in and day out is something that should be recognized. And to be able to recognize you guys with a citation from both the Senate and the House is something that is well deserved. And both the officers and the firefighter, you know, you guys were off duty. Well, you know, Chris, you were working, Eric, you were working, is my understanding. But Andy, you know, you probably, all three of you, day in and day out. So we do want to say congratulations and thank you for your service.[583.04][583.04](applause).
We have a couple of other citations, as Representative Sullivan mentioned, to give tonight. The first are to Detective Eric Campbell and Officer Christopher Lee. And Eric Campbell's here first, if I could read it. Whereas, let's put my glasses on. Whereas, "At 11 o'clock AM on Saturday, May 1, 2021, Detective Eric Campbell was in the area of the New World Market on Bedford Street in Whitman when a report came in of CPR being performed there. And whereas Detective Eric Campbell, despite not being on duty at the time, immediately responded to the scene to continue to perform CPR on the person experiencing a medical emergency until Whitman Fire Department paramedics arrived. And whereas Detective Eric Campbell's selfless actions that day, especially while off duty, truly exemplify the motto of 'to protect and to serve the public,' helping to save a life while earning him the deep appreciation and esteem of the entire Whitman Police Department and the public at large. And therefore, the Board of Selectmen recognizes the exceptionally brave actions of Detective Eric Campbell and wishes to express our heartfelt and sincere appreciation to him for his service to our community. We hereunto set our hands and town seal this 20th day of July 2021 at Whitman, Massachusetts." And this citation has been signed by three of the members of the Board of Selectmen and the other two, Eric, they'll sign them when they get back from wherever they are. And then we'll get it to you. But Eric, correct.[686.12][686.12](applause). And, "Whereas, on Tuesday, May 11, 2021, Officer Christopher Lee was working a road detail on South Avenue in Whitman where National Grid employees were working in a deep trench in the roadway. And whereas Officer Christopher Lee identified a motorist who appeared to be in medical distress and therefore unable to stop his vehicle before entering the work zone, whereupon Officer Lee's actions quickly alerted the work crew, allowing them to safely escape the trench before the vehicle drove into it. After which Officer Lee, Officer Shantler, and Officer Young immediately rendered aid to the motorist. And whereas Officer Christopher Lee's particular alertness to his surroundings and the traffic conditions that day, combined with his selfless actions, directly contributed to the safety and well-being of others, earning him the admiration and respect not only of his colleagues on the Whitman Police Department, but of all Whitman residents. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen recognizes the exemplary and courageous actions of Officer Christopher Lee and wishes to express our heartfelt and sincere appreciation to him for his service to our community. And we hereunto set our hands and town seal this 20th day of July 2021 at Whitman, Massachusetts." And again, it's signed by three of us. And the other two will sign it and then we'll get it to you. Christopher.[771.12][771.12](applause). It's actually official already because three of us signed it, but we'll get the other two one. And then finally, but not leastly, I have a presentation of a citation to firefighter Andrew McGilvery. It's based upon a letter that Chief Timothy Clancy sent to the Board of Selectmen on July 15, 2021. And the matter of that memo, that memo is in this citation. "Whereas, on Sunday, July 4, 2021, firefighter paramedic Andrew McGilvery participated in the Squanton Quincy Fourth of July Parade with fellow members of the Greater Boston Firefighters Pipes and Drums. And whereas firefighter paramedic Andrew McGilvery, along with other band members, noticed a medical emergency occurring in a float vehicle and responded accordingly by securing the float vehicle, identifying the incident as a cardiac arrest, immediately providing CPR, rendering additional care, and resuscitating the patient. And whereas firefighter paramedic Andrew McGilvery acted heroically and selflessly through his exceptional and commendable actions, and he has earned the admiration and respect of not only his colleagues on the Whitman Fire Department, but of other town officials and residents as well. And whereas the Board of Selectmen recognizes the extraordinary and heroic actions of firefighter paramedic Andrew McGilvery, commends him for his bravery and expresses heartfelt gratitude to him. We hereunto set our hands and town seal this 20th day of July 2021 at Whitman, Massachusetts." And this one is signed by actually four members. And we're waiting for the last one to sign it and then we'll get it to you. Wait a minute, where is he?[877.12][877.12](applause). And thank you, Chief Clancy. Well, next item on the agenda is not a citation. I can give you guys some time to leave if you'd like to, unless you want to be here for the fortune teller license. Motion.
And she knows how we're going to vote?
What?
And she knows how we're going to vote? She's the fortune teller?
You said that the last time.
Is she here?
I don't know.
How are you doing?
Good. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
It really took off.
It's amazing. It was over like 1,000 times.
Oh, okay. I'll talk to you.
Randy, isn't her school championship lacrosse?
No, no, that was a club team. They won the championship.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stand me.
Yeah, she keeps me busy, Dan.
I know.[943.12][943.12](laughing).
Chairman, good to see you again.
Good to see you, Senator.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, it's time to take action to renew the fortune teller's license for Stars Tarot Cards on the premises located at 418 Bedford Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dan, as he does always, asked, I wonder if she knows already how we're going to vote.
She flips the cards, only knows how we're going to vote. An old joke.
And certainly is, Dan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Been there a while.
Next item is to, a sad one for me, is to take action to rescind the following from the position of special police officer. Brian J. Bazanson, Robert P. Curran, Justin R. Erns, James Yule, Mark J. Getchell, Lincoln D. Heineman, Carl F. Kowalski, Randolph Lamatina, Peter Palaza, Thomas E. Ruble, and Daniel Salvucci. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I was going to pass the gavel.
I know.
It's odd when you only have three people. This is an action that we took about a month ago, an action we've been taking every year for as long as I can remember, to make certain officials in the town special police officers. Because of the Police Reform Act, now would be incumbent upon any of us who wanted to maintain that status to go to, how long is the training?
Four weeks, I believe, at police academy.
Four weeks of training at police academy? Is that correct, Chief?
Longer than that, I'm sorry, Chief, right? Much longer than that. At four months, is that correct? I'm sorry.
It's closer to six.
Six months, I'm sorry. Yes.
Six months?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not, well, I know, I'm not going to be making it. I don't know about the rest of these guys, but now we have to rescind those generously given badges and cards. Any discussion?
I'll let it go. I'm not happy about it.
Okay. Can we keep the badges? Can we keep the badges like to give to grandchildren or something like that?
Yes, sir, as a memento only.
Memento?
Unfortunately, some of these unintended consequences, now you're feeling kind of the brunt of it.
We understand that, Chief.
You know, it didn't come to my attention until I saw one of the previous agendas where it had another town employee and I just, my wheels got spinning on, okay, what are the implications here as being sworn in as a special police officer and with the new police reform, so.
Do we have, are provisional have to go?
So our auxiliaries have been fully trained and quote unquote certified for now. That's going to be an ongoing basis. So the auxiliaries have been to the Reserve Academy there, so they're grandfathered in at the moment. And what's going to happen is there's going to be a Bridge Academy that we're going to learn about fairly soon. And that's going to be phased in in the next three years. So to retain them, they're going to have to do an additional 200 hours of defensive driving, firearms, defensive tactics, and classroom, which will include everything you've probably seen and read in the papers as far as de-escalation and.
Does it count that I went through all that training in 68?
You might need a refresher, so.
And Randy just went toward, what, five, six years ago? Seven years ago?
Long time. I'm more than willing to forego, yes. But more importantly, I think outside of the ceremonial positions that, you know, the strain this puts on our auxiliaries and our reserve officers, staff that we absolutely depend on, and I know Chief Hanlon depends on. So hopefully the state will come down with something quick and we can get these guys because they do, our auxiliary does a heck of a service for the town. Yeah, it's going to affect the pool moving forward because now there's no part-time academies. So moving forward, there aren't going to be any officers who are certified in that capacity. So it'll either be full-time or nothing, unless they change something in the interim. But right now, it's full-time or nothing.
Thank you.
Fortunately. Thank you.
If I could very briefly, Mr. Chairman, as Chief Hanlon said, you know, I think we're still sort of waiting on the final guidance from the state and everything. But I know, I've spoken with Chief Hanlon and Deputy Chief Bombardier about, obviously we get a lot of service and a lot of great work out of the auxiliary officers. So I know when we do have those final regulations, I know I would certainly be very supportive and, you know, I hope the board would be as well of paying to send a special police officer or auxiliary police officer as appropriate to the academy and only ask that we, the town, be paid back if they leave us within some amount of time, whether it's three years or five years. But we obviously don't want to lose that great service that we get from those types of officers just simply because they can't afford or don't want to spend the money to go on their own. So that's all. I just, we've been talking about that.
Yeah, something to think about. And, you know, just, so some of them are auxiliaries and they're on the younger side because they want to break into law enforcement. And some of them do not want a professional career out of law enforcement, and they do it as kind of a hobby, if you will. But they definitely have the same professionalism as the full-time officers. They've been to a lot of the trainings. They just haven't acquired full-time status. So they would, if they do opt to go through the additional training, most of the older officers who have been here as long as I have, or longer in some cases, this is all they're looking to do. So they wouldn't be trying to transfer to get a full-time job anywhere else. They would remain with the Whitman Auxiliary Department, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, goodly.
With regret.
With regret.
Okay. Take action to a point. Elliot Elise Piper to the position of member of the Council on Aging for a three-year term through June 30, 2024, in order to fill an existing vacancy. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is the, not Council on Aging, I'm sorry. That was the next one.
All right. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take action to rescind the appointment of Joseph Kleiman to the position of member of Whitman Cultural Council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sure. So Mr. Kleiman had been appointed by the board last year for a three-year term. He actually, I think it was found out after that appointment that he actually didn't, had not wished to be reappointed. So he has actually not been sworn in as, again, as a member of the cultural council and has apparently expressed interest, again, you know, in not being a member of the cultural council. Meanwhile, since then, within the last month, there has been interest from someone else, Ms. Juliana Dunn, the next item in your agenda, to become a member. So we certainly thought it was appropriate to take Mr. Kleiman up on his desire to not be officially a member of the cultural council and bring up for the board's consideration Ms. Dunn's possible appointment to the remainder of his term for another two years.
Okay, we'll take action to rescind the appointment first. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll take action to appoint Juliana Dunn to the position of member of the Whitman Cultural Council for a three-year term through June 30, 2023, in order to fill an existing vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is to consider appointment of the following to the Community Preservation Committee. John Goldrosen for a one-year term through June 30, 2022. Melissa Lothrup for a two-year term through June 30, 2023. Richard Rosen for a three-year term through June 30, 2024. And Ryan Tressel for a three-year term through June 30, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Lincoln.
Yes, so there are, there were seven residents who had either formally or informally expressed an interest in serving in the four Board of Selectmen-appointed members as one of the four Board of Selectmen-appointed members to the new Community Preservation Committee. I've been asked to take a look at those applications and make a recommendation for appointment. Two of the folks, including Selectman Evans, on discussing it, two of the possible candidates had expressed that if there were more people who wanted to be appointed to the Community Preservation Committee than there were slots, which of course there were, that they'd be interested in rescinding their desire. They just wanted to make sure that it was a full committee. The remaining person, so the other three folks, with the exception of Melissa Lothrup, I think are pretty well-known to the board. Certainly Mr. Goldrosen and Mr. Rosen certainly have a long set of experiences in this area and I think would certainly bring a lot to the committee in terms of their knowledge of the issues that will come before the Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Tressel, you know, who in his interview for the school committee position certainly had expressed a lot of interest and, you know, was really interested in stepping up and volunteering and I think really expressed that in a very compelling way. And he, you know, prior, post that interview, the school committee had expressed interest in the Community Preservation Committee. And then Ms. Lothrup has been very involved in the Recreation Commission professionally in the town of Sharon. And, you know, certainly a lot of the work of the Community Preservation Committee would be reviewing possible recreation projects in addition to historical preservation, open space, and community housing or affordable housing projects. So certainly that background certainly seemed relevant. She had been the program director, assistant recreation director in Sharon and the program director of the Norwood Recreation Department. And then there was, there's one remaining candidate who had expressed some interest and I have reached out to her. Her background and skill set didn't really match up as well, frankly, with the gambit of the Community Preservation Committee. But I have reached out to her to see if perhaps she might be interested in another opening. We are fortunate that we don't have that many more openings on boards and committees right now this year since there's been a lot of interest. But there is a membership position in, as a non-voting member of the Recreation Commission. So hopefully that is something that perhaps she'd have some interest in. And certainly I'll encourage her to keep her eye out for future vacancies and apply to those as her interest suits, so.
Does anyone have any questions? Or discussion?
Just a quick one. I know we're filling four here and that's the non-specific positions, right? Like certain boards, can you?
Yeah, sure. So the committee is, as adopted at town meeting last month, the committee is nine members, of which four are appointed by the Board of Selectmen for these, you know, interlapping terms, three-year terms. There are another five members, of which one member, and these are according to the state law, and then that portion of the state law is what the town adopted in its bylaws. So one member is to be appointed as a member of the planning board, as designated by that board. One from the Conservation Commission, as designated by the commission. One from the Housing Authority, as designated by the authority. One from the Historical Commission, as designated by that commission. And one from the Recreation Commission, as designated by that commission. So I know Michelle Lamatina has been appointed as a member of the Recreation Commission. I'm not sure what the status is currently of the other remainers, but I can check in and find out.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of appointing John Goldrosen, Melissa Lothrup, Richard Rosen, Ryan Tressel to the Community Preservation Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, to consider appointment of Gerald Eaton to the position of associate member of Board of Appeals for a two-year term through June 30, 2022, in order to fill an existing vacancy. Is there a?
So moved.
Motion. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
To consider the appointment of Michelle Frazier to the Whitman Housing Authority. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Still moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
This is recommended, by recommendation of the?
This is by recommendation of the Housing Authority. If we have that letter in our package. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Actor on the resignation of John Hubbard from the position of Auxiliary Special Police Officer effective July 9th, 2021.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Actor on the request of Richard Rosen to extend the hours of operation for McWiggin's Pub and the patio at McWiggin's to 2:00 a.m. on Friday, August 6th, 2021 in order to conduct a watch party for the U.S. Women's Soccer Team on Thursday, August 5th to close Washington Street between Temple Street, South Avenue and School Street beginning at 8:00 p.m. and to be granted a one-day liquor license to serve from a tent set up at 16 Legion Parkway, approval subject to receipt of the license fee. Zero motion.
Still moved.
Second.
This is really exciting because remember, we have the next-door neighbor, Hanson, who has two young women, two sisters, who are playing on the United States Women's Soccer Team for the first time ever. The two sisters played on the same team. And it's going to be really, going to be really, a really exciting night, at least that night anyway, because it's the first one we know of. And if they, there are the games, we'll probably get more requests. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actor on the request of Helen Iyonon on behalf of the Whitman Women's Soccer to hold the opening day parade on Saturday, August 28th, beginning at 8:30 a.m. in accordance with the route outlined in a letter received July 14th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nice to get back to these parades again.
I know. All those in favor?
Aye.
Actor on the request of Tina Monas and Jen Fernandez to hold the block party on Saturday, August 14th, 2021 from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. with Fox Hill Run being blocked off to traffic between Shelley Lane and Hunter's Path. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. They've done this in the past, I believe.
And next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator's evaluation. We circulated it as part of the package and then Lincoln duplicated that circulation with an email just to make sure that we got it. We have the task of evaluating the performance of the Town Administrator in his first year. And it's written into his contract that there's to be an evaluation by the Board of Selectmen based upon goals and objectives that the Town Administrator develops for the year in which, or the year and a half exactly accurately that he'll be serving, the first year and a half that he'll be serving. Also, we need then, therefore, to schedule a meeting at which Lincoln delivers to us his ideas for the year, his goals and objectives for the year, the ones that he will be measured against. We need to have a meeting with them to agree to those ideas or to alter them or whatever. And then once that, once that happens, then we'll set up a timeframe sometime later for us to deliver evaluation based upon his, our assessment of his performance of those goals and objectives. And that's in the package that you received, and that's the language from his contract. There is also a form that we had thought about using for the prior town administrator, an evaluation form that has a number of questions and categories and each of the selectmen would rate the town administrator's performance in each of those. And that form would be used in, the way I see it, that form would be used in context with the goals and objectives plan that we have. It'd be one of our ways of registering our assessment. What I'd like to do is to schedule at our meeting in August, a discussion with the Town Administrator about that, those goals and objectives and about that form. If any of you have any issues or suggestions, including Lincoln, of that form before we adopt it formally for use in this way, that needs to get to me in advance of that meeting. That cool with everyone? We need to schedule, we need to come up with an August meeting schedule. And that would be one of the items on that. And if you, if you could, I'd like, I'd like to receive the, your input on the use of the form or the form itself. And Lincoln, I'd like to receive your goals and objectives two weeks before that meeting. So I'm going to suggest that the meeting be on the 24th. I'm sorry, is that okay for you?
Yep, August 21st.
24th of August.
Okay, last, okay.
That lasts. And that gives, that gives you enough time?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and that should give us enough time to look over the stuff we have to look over too. Okay. And the object, the objective for that meeting would be to arrive, mutually arrive at a set of goals and objectives by which Lincoln would be measured. And then a timeframe for our actually doing that, which would be, you know, someone's out near the, near the end of his term. So that, hope that's clear. So that would be the 24th. I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's a need for a meeting before the 24th. Does anyone have any thoughts? Only thought I have is that on the, on the agenda, and we received something from Lincoln tonight about strategic planning and, and our consultant, we're going to need to have a meeting with, we're going to need to have a meeting with her. And I suspect that should be, that could, that could happen on the 24th also. I would suspect that almost nothing else happens on that, on that night. Because I think that'd be lengthy, two lengthy discussions probably. Unless you feel that we ought to meet with her earlier than that. But I know that there are people who are going to have trouble being here on one of those other Tuesdays. Justin's not going to be here on the 17th. You mentioned that the 10th was a bit, was a bad one for you.
Shaky, yeah.
Okay, so.
I haven't scheduled anything.
You have nothing? Yeah, I have nothing either. Unfortunately. Okay, so.
I'd like to have them.
As far as the, if we can, just jump to strategic planning for a second. Lincoln sent us some, it looked like a PowerPoint presentation from Ann Donner that was dated, actually dated tomorrow. And it sort of outlines what the process, the steps and the process for the strategic plan are going to be. There's activity in July and August, September and October, October and November, three different phases. I might have expected that those three different phases have had occurred earlier than, than the summer, seeing as how we actually made arrangements to hire her back in January. But for some reason, we're getting this, this schedule now. But we do need to talk to her as a group, so 24th could be the time to do that, I suspect. Yeah, it will be. Lincoln in his, in his email to us this evening suggested that she would like some input from the board as far as, if I could quote that, do you have that, do you have that quote?
I do, I do, yes.
I just want the quote that deals with what she wants from us tonight, which we're not going to give her. If you could just give me the quote.
Right. What she had requested was the board sense of the, quote, "long-term primary strategic initiative over the next five years."
Yeah, it's a, well, it's something that somebody has to come up with, yes. However, when you receive the request to do that, like a couple of hours before the meeting, it's kind of difficult to do that. So we're not going to, we're not going to do that right now. I also, frankly, I think she's been given a lot of information already. She has been given, I just, I hope that she has been given our community survey that we did two years ago. I hope that she's been given the report of the override budgetary committee that Randy ran with, and I hope she's been given that. I hope she's been given the report of the Capital Planning Committee. There's a lot of material that we have that she should have had by now. I would have expected that she had a long time ago. So I was a little bit concerned when she's asking us for, for that kind of a statement tonight. But she should have, if she doesn't have it, she should have it. She was first interviewed by us in December sometime. It was either December or January, December, in December. We had a Zoom, we had a Zoom meeting with her. And I can recall our directing her to that information at that time. I might have expected that, that by this time, she would have reached out to some stakeholders, but that is in her plan to do so over the next couple of months, which we, all right. As long as it gets done, it's all right. But we'd like to see some progress made by August 24th when we meet with her. I understand that Lincoln has set up a meeting with the department chairs for tomorrow with her, which is a good, good, good starting point. But that's all I have, that's all I have to say about it. Strategic planning is important. It takes, it takes some energy, it takes some time. I can recall, I was involved in it a lot at Massasoia. It was one of my responsibilities for a while. And I can recall, with some fondness actually, the strategic planning retreat for the Whitman Hanson School District way back when. And we held it, I think we held it at the conference center at Massasoia. And we spent a whole day with all of the stakeholders in one place at different tables, getting together with our ideas. I really enjoyed watching the most recent discussion at the school committee where they sort of, around the table threw out what they thought was the most important. And I thought that, I thought that was a good exercise too. I'd be looking forward to some things like that. But it needs to be done with a little warning and it needs to be done with a little forethought and perhaps on, on the 24th, that can happen. Unless anyone feels that we ought to go differently.
If I may, just, while you mentioned Whitman Hanson, I think we also, when we spoke to Ms. Donner, just for anybody who's paying attention out there, this is not just the town of Whitman department heads. We were pretty specific that the school would also be involved in this.
Right. And if I were, if I, if someone put a gun to my head and said, what is the primary objective over the next five years for Whitman? I would say it would be to continue to honor the wishes of its citizens, to have a strong school department, to continue to maintain a strong police and fire departments and to, and to, and to better support the DPW with some kind of a building perhaps. I think it was clear from that survey that those are the things that we thought was important as a community. The other side of that is we have to figure out a way to finance.
Yeah, make that happen.
To finance all of that. And so if there's a primary goal, it's find a way that is acceptable to our citizens to provide the services that it says that it needs. We need to, that's a goal. And I think that goal has been out there pretty clearly. It needs to be formalized and Ms. Donner is going to help us formalize it. And I have no doubt that she can, that she has the ability and the resources to do that from looking at her materials, but we just, it has to start getting done.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to your point about the data sets that she does have, she does have that constituent survey information and in addition, the job classification study that the town had conducted now a year and a half ago. The housing production plan, which has not been adopted by town meeting, but you know, she's, it's still, I think, a valuable document to consider. The most recent town report, the approved fiscal year 2022 budget and the most recent capital plan and budget. So just to answer that question.
So she's got some things to fill in the blocks with?
She does.
Okay, good. Excellent. Okay, so that takes care of that on your, on your agenda, right? The strategic planning part?
It does.
So we'll go to, and we're settled on the 24th for the August meeting and fiscal year and financials.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, with the close of the fiscal year, fiscal year 2021 on June 30th, I just want to give the board a quick understanding, not finalized, but a quick understanding of where we ended up. So the department heads have been working with our town accountant, Ken Littell, and myself to initiate encumbrances to pay the final fiscal year 2021 bills and determine what our final expenditures and revenues were or are for fiscal year 2021. The, the good news is that preliminarily, so free cash is the remainder, as a quick reminder, it's the, it's whatever sum of free cash wasn't spent from the previous fiscal year, however much revenues go over what projected revenues are for fiscal year 2021 and however much was appropriated at town meeting last year that was not spent by departments in fiscal year 2021. Those three sums together create free cash, which of course is certified by the state. So this is certainly not a final number, but it certainly is looking positive in that we know that we'll have at least the projected $840,000 in free cash, which is certainly a healthy place to start. We're still figuring out the final information regarding what final expenditures will be in fiscal year 2021, but certainly we're on a good trajectory as far as building up our free cash reserves and having that as a resource for very likely one-time expenditures, usually, you know, to be used for capital. So again, just, just wanted to give, make sure the board knew preliminarily where we were at the close of the fiscal year, so.
Have we, have we finished the 2020 audit?
The 2020 audit is, should be done any day. The auditors have everything and.
They don't need anything else?
They do not.
Good.
Nope.
Good.
They, they always come back and ask for more things, but they haven't for a little bit, so.
Okay, see, you're holding your breath.
I think we're good. Fingers crossed.
Good. Town website redesign?
Yes, so the board received that email from me regarding some thoughts on where we'd like to go with website redesign. This is something that our IT Director, Josh McNeil, has been thinking about and working on for a little bit. We mostly wanted to make sure, two things, that the general overall design makes sense to the board. It's a refresh. I think, I think, as I wrote my email, I think everyone, the members of the board and members of the public can agree that it's time for a refresh on what the website does and what its functionality is. But the main idea is to have that visual refresh, but then also have the categories reflect, better reflect what residents, members of the public, you know, whoever's coming on the website, what they're most likely to be wanting to see. And primarily that means, that means online bill pay and having a very easy link to find online bill pay, to have the calendar so that, you know, we have boards, committee, commission meetings up, up there, front and center. I definitely like to get mass GIS maps up there so that assessing maps are available to people. That's something that all, that, once they're available to people online, people love them to be able to see, you know, who a butters are to a particular piece of property, where the wetlands are on a particular piece of property, et cetera. So those are the particular areas and then making it very clear and upfront and center where folks can go to ask a question about where to find something. And then finally, having some, having a little, having it be a little bit clearer what the top-line menu items are, specifically what I was involved with in Hanover, which I think we got really good feedback on once it was in place, was having a broad category of boards, committees, commissions. So there are links there to the elected and appointed boards. And then a separate category for government, you know, so to the fire department, the police department, the town administrator's office, the treasure collector's office, et cetera. So there's, so people can a little more easily distinguish between those two items and find things a little bit more easily in a more intuitive way. So just wanted to collect any feedback that members of the board have about what that should look like. You know, if we, if you folks don't want to be more involved, we'll, you know, well, that's fine too, but I want to make sure you have the opportunity to, so.
Anyone have any comments or suggestions?
I looked at it. I wasn't really getting hung up over colors or, I just, I think from anyone who's tried using the current website, it's difficult that, I don't think you can find your, your information very easy. And I just would like something that if we're, you know, a clear, I guess, screen that if we're trying to get information out to the public, you know, there is an easier way to, for you, the chiefs, if they're trying to relay a message that it's crystal clear on the homepage and, you know, just another avenue of social. the homepage and, you know, just another avenue of social media, I guess, but definitely just easier on the eyes and easier to get information out to the public would be my number one.
Yeah, I'll second that emotion. At various times when I've had to find something, I've been frustrated by not being able to find what I want to find. There'd be some information in that little block there that's there one minute and gone the next. And usually it's gone the next one I'm looking for. I don't have any specific examples right now, but I've been frustrated at times just trying to find out something, find out something simple. So that's, that's actually more important to me than, than what it looks like. But I, I agree with what Randy's saying. I don't know why I'm doing this, but I'm agreeing with Randy a lot these days.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think that's dropping off some, that's dropping off a lot of large menu items that aren't intuitive, that don't make any sense, right? There, there are things on there now that I don't know what they mean, so let's get rid of them, right? That it's not something that someone would intuitively click on, unlike online bill pay, unlike GIS maps, unlike, you know, one thing I didn't mention was online permitting. So we've, we've been implementing online permitting so that somebody can easily go and file for a building permit, right? They can file for whatever permit it is that they're looking for, so.
Yeah, one of the things that I think needs to be looked at, first of all, it needs to be maintained and updated on a regular basis. But the biggest thing that you see online is people wondering on holidays, is trash going to be collected that day or whatever, a day delay, a delay, or if there is a delay because of weather or a truck broken down. If there's an area in front of the main page for information right on, in other words, DPW, if all of a sudden a trash truck breaks down in a certain center precinct of town, trash will be delayed, put it right on the website. That way people know. I mean, people constantly complaining on Facebook on issues like that.
And like you see, Dan, I know you've been on there a couple of times, I have, where people are asking questions. I personally don't want people going to Facebook for answers about the town.
Right.
They should be able to go to the town website, get their answer, and be done with it.
Good point. Update on the Whitman Middle School project?
Yes, so the middle school building committee, on which I serve with Selectman-Lamatina, I wanted to make sure that the board knew this. The committee has been meeting approximately monthly. Right now, out on the street, out in the world, is the bid document for soliciting an owner's project manager for the project. That was actually in the, what's called the central register, you know, the, the main clearinghouse for all procurements of that type. Last week, the, the applications, or I should say bids, to come back from prospective owner's project managers are due back on July 28th, so that's coming up. Currently, to give folks some idea about rough numbers, about what that solicitation for bids shows, is that it includes an estimate of the total cost of the renovation or replacement of the middle school at 50 to 85 million dollars. And that, and it, it also specifies that the decision about whether or not the grade, what the grade configuration is for whatever the new middle school, whatever a new middle school or renovated middle school looks like, whether or not it's five through eight or six through eight is, is, continues to be outstanding. That is out there, and if it was, to be clear, that 50 to 85 million dollars is obviously a pretty rough estimate, but to be clear, it does not include the, if, if the fuller five through eight configuration was there, it is not included in that 50 to 85 million dollar estimate. It would be larger if that configuration was four grades instead of three. The, the, I think finally, the, what's specified, there's a timeline that's laid out in the solicitation for bids for owner's project managers. This is a, is a feasibility study and schematic design phase of about eight months, a design of 10 to 12 months, and a development, construction documents, bidding phase, again, 10 to 12 months, and then a construction phase of 24 to 36 months. I think that might be sort of aggressive, but I want to make sure that the board and the public, you know, knows what's out there in this solicitation for bids for owner's project managers. The last piece I wanted to mention is that currently, right now, the interviews are expected to be conducted by an evaluation subcommittee that has been appointed by the school building committee that has six members. It's Dave Codaro, Bob Curran, Don Essen, myself, Superintendent Simonak, Facilities, Ernie Sandlin, the facilities manager from the schools, and the new finance manager for the schools, John Stambrook. And the interviews of the owner's project manager, possible candidates, are expected at this, at this moment to be, to take place between August 9th and 13th, with an anticipated execution of a contract pending the review of the Massachusetts School Building Authority in early October. So those dates are obviously, you know, not set in stone, but I wanted to make sure that folks knew that that project is on its way. There's some decisions outstanding to be made, but right now, we're at that point of beginning to think about an owner's project manager to help the town and the schools think about feasibility and think about what to do with that building and/or space if that building is unable or it's undesirable that it be renovated, so.
Anyone have any questions?
I would just add is, just to clarify what Lincoln said, that Mr. Sandlin, the, the cost estimate right now is exactly how the building sits right now. A six through eight construction, no performing arts center. I, I think everybody on that committee knows the shape, obviously MSBA knows the shape that the Whitman Middle School's in, obviously, to get picked in, in the first go around for some type of new building or refurbishment. I'd like to say everything has gone smooth in that committee, but I, I think there are some people that are saying, look, we don't want to see a failed project. We know we need a new school, and I think some fiscal issues have caused a slight division. Still very early, but I think for myself, and I know Lincoln agrees and some other members on there, it's, we know we need a new middle school, and people have our word, we're going to try to do it the most fiscally responsible way that we get a project that passes. We don't go through this like our neighboring town and, and really end up in tougher shape.
Just one question on that. Who makes the decision whether to add an extra grade in the middle school?
It's, it's unknown right now, I think. I think if you ask MSBA, they would say it's the committee's decision.
Because I mean, if you don't build it to add the extra grade, but, you know, you won't have the room, but then if you build it to have the extra grade and it's decided not to do it that way, just because Hanson has it that way.
The superintendent, assistant superintendent definitely submitted a, an academic plan where they could justify it.
Okay.
I, yeah, justify the extra grade.
Or just moving it, you know?
As things sit right now, that they've obviously, you know, shown MSBA, to MSBA that they can justify the extra space.
And that would?
Cost factor, we don't know yet. Maybe, maybe that, as, as the project goes on, maybe that now starts to really outweigh whether or not they add that, depending on the cost.
That would loosen up room in the two elementary schools that we have if you move one of their grades to the middle school.
Yeah. I, I know part of the plan is obviously making space for implementation of full day kindergarten, which, you know, we, we've talked about it for a long time, and if the taxpayers decide, obviously you need the space to do that.
Right, and you can adjust the elementary school to the districts that, the precincts that would go there.
Right. I, I think we would, it would definitely create space. Would be okay, even if, according to the assistant superintendent, Mr. Ferro, that if actually pre-K was ever mandated, I think we would have the space at that point as well.
Okay, thank you.
That's about all I got.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss Mass General Law 40R and 40S.
Yes, so I want to make sure the board was aware, there's sort of a carrot and stick here, and it's a complicated issue, but let me try and sort of boil it down and, and give a quick understanding of why it's on the agenda. So when I talk about carrot and stick, we're talking about local zoning and specifically the density of zoning and its inclusion or not inclusion of what's thought of as affordable housing in particular districts. In, in one law, it's, it's both around a transit oriented area, so in our case, our commuter rail station, and in our, in a downtown area. In one law that we're talking about here, it's just around the transit related, you know, the commuter rail station. But there are several, there's a whole variety of laws, and it's certainly a complicated topic that governs this. Well, I want to make sure that this came up sooner rather than later is because the state legislature passed and the governor signed recently a piece of legislation, which is called, which is known as the MBTA Communities Act. And what that act does is require communities that have a transit station, in our case, our commuter rail station, obviously, to have particular zones near that station within a half a mile, and, hold on just a moment, it's within a, it requires that each community, each MBTA community have a zoning ordinance or by law that provides at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, and that each such of these districts has a density of at least 15 units per acre and is within at least a half a mile of, in our case, our commuter rail station. And to be clear, the Department of, State Department of Housing and Community Development is tasked with implementing regulations that will govern this. They have not done that. We do not yet know when they will do that, but we do know that at some point they will have to, according to this new law. What, what the law specifies is that if a community, an MBTA community, as termed in the law, like our own, is not, does not comply with this new zoning area, that it, we would not be eligible for three different types of state grants. One is a MassWorks grant, another is known as the Housing Choice Initiative, and another is known as the Local Capital Projects Fund. So, you know, you can kind of depend, you can, it depends on whether, what you think of as mandatory or not, but this is punitive, right? This is the stick versus the carrot. To be clear, I think folks on this board know this, but, you know, if members of the public may not know, is that in this direct area, right around our commuter rail station to the west of the commuter rail station, on either side of South Avenue, it is owned industrial, except right around South Avenue, which is zone commercial. And then on the east side, it is, right around South Avenue, it's, I should say, commercial, I meant to say general business, it's general business on the east side, and a residence zone slightly farther to the east. But certainly, none of these zones allow by right that kind of density. So that's the stick. The carrot that had, has previously existed and has existed for several years, that's Mass General Law 40R and 40S. And that allows, if there is a, a zone that allows for increased density, either, either or, either or, I should say, and at the commuter, around the commuter rail station, or in our case, around our downtown business district, that if the town adopts that and that plan is pre-approved by the state, we would be eligible for what's known as density bonuses, so payments of funds if units are actually created in these, in these zones. So that's, again, that's the, the carrot to the stick. But again, the stick is a, well, I want to make sure that this came before the board now so that you're aware of it, and we could start to get some policy guidance about which, if any of these things, you know, we should attempt to pursue.
I personally would like to see something from the planning board on it, how they feel about it, and before I rolled on it. I mean, I do know the 40R project, probably going back six years ago, it, it started gaining a little traction through the previous town administrator and, and some, you know, on another committee, and then it kind of fell by the wayside. I know there are definitely some benefits to us with that, but I think it's, at this time, I'd like to see what the planning board has, has to say about it before we made any policy.
We can get some kind of guidance from them. I know that Justin sent, Justin sent an email because he couldn't be here tonight to say that he was in favor of the, of the carrot and aware of the stick. And, and if it came to a vote tonight, he wanted to let us know that he would be voting with the people who voted for it. But I think it does make sense for us to get some more, some guidance from the people that ought to be thinking about at the planning board also. So I agree with Randy. So if we can get that message to them, then they can come back to us.
Will do. Great.
Okay, CARES Act.
Yes.
American Rescue Plan Act.
So there's been quite a lot of activity on that over the last few weeks, so I want to make sure the board knows where we're at. So to start with the CARES Act, so again, the CARES Act was the piece of legislation that was passed with funding that came through Plymouth County. That was back in March, late March of 2020. And the, the town of Whitman, again, the county rather than the state, the county, Plymouth County chose to receive those funds. It's a reimbursement program, so we, the town, go out and spend money on things that are related to COVID in some way or another in response to the COVID pandemic, and then submit for reimbursement to the county and then receive reimbursement. A quick idea about where we are in broad strokes with that. So we, our quote unquote cap from the county originally was $2,322,000. Of that, the town has so far received $986,000 from the county, and actually, I wanted, that's another reason I want to make sure the board heard this, within the last few weeks, very positively, the county has released $591,000 of that $986,000. So things are sort of shaking loose there a little bit at the county, and we're receiving some payments, including $174,000 that the town applied and has received on behalf of the schools, both the regional school district and South Shore Vo-Tech. So that's one tranche of money of the $2.3 million, $986,000. There are, there's $510,000, including $346,000, $510,000 of pending applications to the county of things that the town or the school district and the town is, is applying for reimbursement on its behalf, and for which we've applied to the county, and we're hoping for reimbursement soon. We continue, you know, have that frequent conversation with the county folks. So that's $510,000. And then we do have $521,000 of monies that have been spent. They have not yet been applied for, for the county. The big bulk of that is $364,000 in school expenses. We just received last week quite a lot of invoices from the school for things that they had paid for, so now we are going to go and apply to the county for that reimbursement. So that leaves at the end a small pocket of money. And I wanted to make sure that the board knew where we were planning at this moment to spend the remainder of the money of our cap with the county, our $2.3 million cap, and some. and some possible things that we could do that I'd like to get some guidance from the board on. So in our projected payroll, so that in particular is additional time for custodians, for town hall custodian, and also for public health folks and other folks around town who are responding to the pandemic, that's $88,000. We're earmarking and hoping that it would be reimbursed by the county. I'm optimistic. I've been making the case with the county that we can spend $64,000 to repair boilers at the police station. We certainly need in a pandemic a police station that has hot water. So I think that's appropriate. $23,000 for additional for visiting nurses who are helping with tracking of COVID cases and, you know, and doing the contact tracing. $9,500 in additional clean services that have been, has been happening at the police station in recognition that our one custodian for the town really isn't sufficient in that context. And some clean supplies and other things for the fire department. Those are projections for, and to be clear, we can, we have these monies. I want to be clear, we don't have these monies, but we may spend these monies through December 31st. So with all, these are projections, so we don't know. But based on those projections, based on what we've already spent and have received, or hopefully in the process of receiving from the county, we have approximately $113,000 left that is not, so to speak, spoken for at the moment. I certainly want to make sure that we don't leave one dime on the table. And we won't, as far as I'm concerned. So I, there's a few, I've spoken with department heads and gotten, solicited their ideas about, you know, what COVID-related things we might want to spend these monies on. The primary things that I would recommend to the board would be, we would, in order to fully implement townwide, are some electronic permitting, folks that, things that aren't currently, that we haven't yet paid for, for electronic permitting, on electronic permitting. Certainly there's a COVID nexus, you know, reducing person-to-person contact at town hall, allowing folks to do things online. That would cost approximately $32,000. Of that $113,000 to, in particular, gets some fire department permitting on, on the system, which we've already purchased with CARES Act monies. And additionally, this might be a little bit more of a stretch, but I'm certainly going to make the case to the county, and I'm cautiously optimistic. I think it would be great to fix the AV system in the downstairs auditorium. We all know it's very hard to hear with that decades-old equipment. I would say that having a better system will allow for better social distancing down there. And so that would, these are estimates, you know, again, I want to get some feedback from the board, but in estimates, that would cost about $60,000. And the remaining amount of money, we do, I would recommend that we use COVID monies, our remaining cap, to pay for part of the re-roofing of the armory building. The COVID ambulance is stored there a lot, and I think that certainly would be an appropriate COVID expense. But on that piece, I wanted to make sure that those remaining expenditures, in order to get us to the point where we're not leaving one dime on the table with the county and the CARES Act monies, that the board's comfortable with those, that those expenditures above and beyond what we've just been doing day to day in response to COVID makes sense, you know, to the board. There's no guarantee of reimbursement. The, it is a reimbursement program, like I said, so we spend the money and then we ask for reimbursement. Certainly some of these things would definitely be reimbursed for, based on our past experience and other towns' past experiences. I cautiously optimistic, as I said, about all of them, but there's no guarantee. But I did want to get a sense about, if that makes sense.
Anyone have any thoughts?
Yes, at our last Plymouth County Advisory Board meeting, Tom O'Brien did make the statement that towns should not leave any money left on the table. But if in fact you submitted some projects that were denied in the very beginning, might have been denied because they were questionable and they didn't want towns to run out of money too quickly. So he suggested if there's, if you have money on the table, maybe resubmitting some of those, some of those bills.
We've submitted everything we conceivably could.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because.
100%.
You know, I mean, because he said that, they looked at something, they said, well, I don't know. Let's wait and see what comes. And then at the end, if there's more money left over, they may agree to it. But I don't know if you have to resubmit them again. I don't know. Paul, Tom, he'll let you know, whatever you can do.
We have definitely submitted for everything we could.
I think way back when, over Zoom, I got tasked with being the CARES guy for the board. I know we were extremely, maybe to a fault, overly cautious early on with our submissions as to not run into any trouble paying for things. And I think we did a pretty good job. I don't believe we were actually, have been denied any, any of our submissions. But again, like I said, we were slightly overly cautious. And I know there were some technology things that we, you know, questioned early on. And I would just say, if there is any, any tech stuff, maybe.
Right, no sense in leaving money on the table.
Yeah, that we could look into that. And I know Josh had a plan early on, and we, I think we purchased the ambulance, which obviously worked out fantastic. Definitely for the residents. So maybe circle back with him and try to maybe revisit that plan and see if there's anything there that he was lacking.
The IT things that I talked about have been in conversation with Josh. So there are more things over and above that that he identified. This is what we have funding for, you know, or that we potentially have funding for within our cap with the county. So, yeah, I mean, if, if those additional expenditures make sense to the board, it would be great to get a vote if you see fit. Because we want to make sure, you know, so we don't have a hard and fast deadline yet from the county about when they need receipts. But certainly, we know it's by December 31st and probably a little bit before. And if there are things, as we all know, there's supply chain issues going on now, and it, you know, will take a little time to make sure we have it in place. So, I mean, if these two things do make sense, that would be helpful.
Would it be, would it be timely enough to receive a list of what you just said in writing so that we can, so that other members of the board can look at it too that aren't here tonight? And would it be timely enough for us to be able to vote on it at our next meeting?
Most likely for all of those items. You know, they're, they're, everyone's having trouble getting things in a timely fashion now, right? However, I think the answer is most likely, yes. And we could certainly proceed, you know, so for example, the AV system downstairs, we are not going to have that in place and build in the next month, right? However, you know, if we do want to proceed with that, it would be, even if, even if it's not a vote, but a sense from the board that, yes, that's an expenditure that makes sense. We can go do the design with them, not make any commitments yet, but at least have something ready to go, right, on August 24th.
Why don't, why don't you send, why don't you send out a list of what you, what you just went over? And send it out to the, send it out to the Board of Selectmen and ask if they have any objections to this. And that way you'll get the same consensus. And everyone will have a chat, a chance to look at it.
And then my last question is for the, the public health nurse and the visiting nurse. That keeps those physicians staffed through the fiscal year?
Through December 31st. So we must spend CARES Act money by December 31st. According to the federal government.
Give us a deadline to get back to you, too, on that, when you sent that to us.
Sure.
Tell us one that, instead of just saying, you know, if you have any concerns, if you'd like to add to this, just say, let me know by so, by such and such a date, when is appropriate date, what you think.
Sounds good. That's helpful. Thank you. I did want to make sure the board heard about the American Recovery Plan and where we are with that. So that's obviously the new piece of legislation. The federal guidance and state guidance has been sort of slow in coming on that, but we do, it is coming into focus a little bit. So we just received actually today, the state, let me back up. There are monies that, for, that are, that in the American Recovery Plan passed by Congress, signed by the President, that are specifically for what are called non-entitlement units of government, like ourselves. That is municipalities that have fewer than 50,000 people. And so there are monies that the state applied for on our behalf. We then had to apply to the state. And half of those monies, approximately half, $796,318.36 came into our account today, actually. So we have a portion of those funds. We don't know for sure, but we think that's approximately half of what we'll be receiving there separately. The county, again, chose, within the last two weeks, to, rather than having a separate tranche of money go through the state, the county chose to apply for it. The county is doing so. Those monies, they say, they, the Plymouth County Treasurer and one of the commissioners were on a call with them on Thursday. And they say that their intention is to split that money by population. They are intending to have some guidance as to how this program will work at the county level within 45 to 60 days. So stay tuned on that. The total amount of money is a little bit more than what was received from the CARES Act. Not all of that money was done proportionally by, by population. But to give a rough sense of it, again, I think we would certainly expect to have at least $2.3 million from that county money. But stay tuned. We'll have to know from the county exactly how they intend to distribute it. Both of those tranches of money can be spent according to five areas. And so, because I think there's, there's been a lot of misinformation, I think, out there about what the monies can be spent for. There are very specific things that we will be allowed to spend it on. One thing to keep in mind is that it may be spent for the next three years until 2024. So while it's one-time monies, there's certainly, it does not need to be spent all at once, right? We have at least three fiscal years to use it. The main areas are revenue replacement. We do not have the final guidance from the federal government, but as far as how they're going to calculate revenue replacement, it's based on how much revenue we may have lost as a result of the pandemic. I think from my looking at the federal regulations, I think if we can use any monies towards revenue replacement, it'll be pretty nominal. We just don't know yet because the regulations aren't there, but it's not, you know, these several million dollars, well, not by any means, certainly, the grand majority of them will never be able to be used according to the current law on revenue replacement. It can also be spent on wastewater, sewer, and broadband projects. So that's very promising for us, obviously. We need to know, what's not clear yet is whether or not any monies, if it needs to be spent on like a linear project, like our sewer force main, or possibly if some of it may be able to be spent on a new DPW building. That's not clear yet. However, it is, it is, what is clear is that we will, we definitely will be able to spend it on some type of project there, since we know we have, we will have that expense. So that's great news for us in that respect. And then the other two areas are in continuing response to the pandemic. So we certainly want to exhaust our CARES Act money through December 31st. But if we have costs in response to the pandemic after that, these monies could be used for that. And then it also can be used for, this is a pretty small category, but it could be used for premium pay for lower wage employees who were working during the pandemic. But it is geared towards lower wage employees, and that's, again, not very clear on exactly how that can be spent. So I think the most promising thing, seeing as how it's one-time revenue, I would certainly strongly recommend that it be considered for a one-time expense, for a capital expense, or something that's going away, like responding to COVID, not being built into the budget for, for an ongoing expense that we just would have to replace with tax revenue later in order to continue to provide that service. And it does look promising that we'll probably be able to use at least a big chunk of it towards sewer projects. So happy to obviously, I know it's a lot of information, but I want to make, it's, it's been a fast-moving thing over the last several months, and particularly in the last few weeks, and I want to make sure the board was up to speed.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda is Eagle Scout projects.
Yes, so again, just briefly, I know Dan went to two Eagle Scout ceremonies. On Saturday, I went to one for Danny Ken, who rebuilt the shed, the maintenance, the storage shed over at Colebrook Cemetery separately on behalf of the town. There were three recent Eagle Scout projects that have been finished, completed. One is, one of, one of the Eagle Scouts was receiving it at the ceremony, I think that you attended, Selectman Salvucci, for the kiosk, informational kiosk at Harding's Pond.
Right, Harding Pond. It's not finished. They're waiting for the glass front, they come in so they can post.
Great, yep.
And keep them, they're waiting for that. But the DPW also was involved with that, with the Eagle Scout. And he was able to get all his supplies donated through some of the alumni company, Cape Cod, and things.
And then there's also the same kiosk being built, informational kiosk, that was built by a scout named Jack Allen at Hobart's Pond. His brother built a, and installed, which is, that project is complete, a flagpole at the library, which was appreciated. And then finally, a new project, the board's aware of it, new project that was just proposed, just came over, was Danny's sister Samantha Ken would like to build a pavilion on Essex Street by Hobart's Pond, like a covered wooden pavilion. So I think, I know she's been in contact with the DPW as well. Looks, the design schematics looks like a great project to me, but I just want to make sure the board was aware of it. And obviously, if there's any objections to having that pavilion, let me know. But I think. Exactly, exactly. So a lot of exciting Eagle Scout projects, and a lot of them on behalf of the town, which is certainly very appreciative.
One of the other Eagle Scout projects that I went to last weekend was, it's, they went in and they took like 400 pitches of gravestones in Colebrook Cemetery, right? And they put it on a website, so if it's, you're a family member, you can go on the website and see the history of your family. I forget the name of it now. Do you remember? Yeah, and you go on there and they said people have been looking at it. I mean, did you go on, Laurie went on it and looked at it and saw one of her relatives? As long as you didn't see mine.
Your relatives or your gravestone?
No, my gravestone. I don't have one yet. But anyways, they did a great job. We had it at the AA in Hanson. Because we weren't too, they weren't too sure where they could have it, Whitman, as far as the crowd, because there was about 65 people there, so.
And I went, I go by the library on the way home, obviously, and to and from. And the flagpole looks fantastic. I mean, it really is, looks like it's been there forever, but I, I saw them putting it up that day and great job there, too.
Okay, that's it, folks. Just to remind myself and to remind you guys, I have to read, I have to do the liaison assignments for this year. We have the same members as last year. If you want to keep the same liaison assignments set, fine. If you, if you want to change anything, let me know before the next meeting, and I'll try to announce them.
I'm comfortable with my hands.
Okay, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Some motion, some move?
Second.
There are any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much.